The Belfont Borough Council Work Session, please, for Monday, April 15th, Tax Day, in case you forgot. Welcome, everyone, to the Belfont Borough Council Work Session. No council action or making motions or approvals was taken during the work session. Quickly, we'd like to have a trivia question from Council Vice President Dan.
I do have trivia questions tonight. This is presidential trivia. Sorry, thank you.
Presidential trivia.
I love it.
Four of our former presidents were cheerleaders in college. Can you tell me who they are or were?
George Bush was one.
George Bush was one.
And Calvin Coley.
Was, it was not on this list.
Bill Clinton.
No, but that's a good guess.
Ronald Kennedy.
No.
Ronald Reagan.
Ronald Reagan. There you go.
Taft.
Nope. Okay, that's perfect. The other two are surprises, I thought, but not that much of a surprise. Anybody have any guesses for the other two? We have George Bush and Ronald Reagan.
Which Bush?
Anybody else? Dwight Eisenhower and also Franklin D Roosevelt.
Matt Aman.
Yeah, before he contracted polio. He was very athletic.
Very good. All right, next, items for discussion. The one and only Matt Aman from Public Works, the superintendent, is here to give us an update. All right.
Okay, I compiled a little bit of a list here. I'll start with stuff related to streets. Probably the first and foremost.
Is it on?
Is it on?
It's all on.
All right, sorry about that. Can you hear now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna start with the street department. Probably the first and foremost is the spring leaf collection, which we're gonna do next week, the 22nd through the 26th. I know that the ladies got it on the website last week on the 9th, so we tried to get it out there on the social media and the website. So that's coming up next week. The, the next, probably the big thing that people are asking about is the street sweeping. We did start that last week a little bit, weather permitting, and then we had, the equipment broke down, but we did start some of that. So I believe we got, like, Bishop Street done, Water Street, and we started out in the residential area on the east side of town, out by Parkview Heights. So we'll continue with that this week. And that typically takes, you know, it takes about six to eight weeks, just depending on the weather and equipment breakage. So we usually done with that, usually the middle of May, when we're done with everything. And then the next thing that leads after that is the painting of the streets, the crosswalks, the curbing. That obviously starts right after that, towards the end of May, and that takes us usually till the middle of July. You know, it usually takes eight to 10 weeks. Obviously, that's weather dependent as well. So that's something to look forward to. Now, when we do do the, obviously, the sweeping and the line painting, you know, we, we try, I don't think we're doing the parking stalls this year, because we did them last year, but when we're doing the sweep, and we will post the parking stalls that need to be evacuated, usually about three days ahead if we can. That's typically our MO with that, so residents can expect that, at least a three-day notice. They'll get a barricade up with some signage, kinda letting them know we're coming that way. And then as far as the workload goes, the Parkview Heights or the Parkwood Drive Storm Drain Project, the paving is supposed to be done next week as well, weather permitting. The, PennDOT was in, not PennDOT, but a contractor was in for PennDOT to do the pedestrian crosswalk upgrades last week. It was, I believe it was part of some grant money or something they had.
Yes, it came through PennDOT, it was a PennDOT program.
Right. Now, they, they upgraded the crosswalks at Bishop and Wilson, Bishop and Allegheny, and then Allegheny and Lynn. Now, the equipment's up, but I was told that the, the timing of the crosswalks will be updated here later on. So I don't know if they're giving, I assume they're giving more time for the pedestrians to cross, but that's, PennDOT dictates all that, so I'll keep you posted when that's completed, but he said it could be a month or two. Let's try to see what else I got here. The other project we're really working on right now, I'm working on with a contractor, was we're doing a storm drain and storm box replacement on West Lamb Street, starting up on Haupt Avenue, and we're working our way down to Thomas Street. Last month, we replaced three of the storm boxes on West Lamb, two at Haupt Avenue, one at Brown Avenue, and we put in 80 feet of storm pipe, 15-inch. Now, there's 750 feet more pipe to put in and three more boxes, and I have, I'm working with a contractor right now to finish the rest of that project, because it's much more than we can handle with, you know, with the staff that we have. So, once I have a schedule on that, I'll keep you posted, but I suspect probably they'll get started in the next three weeks or so, but we'll keep the residents posted once we have some solid dates on when to expect, you know, the construction. And I think that's really it, streets-related. On the water side of things, we're currently working on putting 400 feet of 2-inch water main, which is an extension, on Fishburne Hill Road. We should be buttoned up with that in the next couple of days, hopefully, weather permitting. We're hoping to get it done tomorrow. I think it's supposed to start raining again Wednesday, so we're looking to get that done. And then beyond that, you know, I think our main focus for the water department's gonna be working on leak detection and repair. We, our numbers are starting to escalate up as far as our usage, so the next few months, we're probably gonna hit that pretty hard, so you'll see us out and around trying to deploy some of our equipment, trying to find these leaks, luckily. Deb helped us find one last week. We did find two last week, and Deb helped us find one. And then, we're also starting, we're trying to get back into the water meter replacement, which I want, kinda want the residents to be aware of. We finally have enough material to start doing this project again. We initialized this back in 2020, and then, then we had trouble getting, getting equipment, so obviously, we wanna start, you know, I think Barbie's gonna be stamping everybody's invoices and stuff to call in to schedule it, so I obviously encourage people to get that scheduled if, if not had it done, so we can try to get this process over. And also, the, the water department typically, we, we try to replace 10 fire hydrants within the borough throughout the year. We haven't identified those 10 yet, but we are, we're working on that. We try to stay on top of that as much as we can. And then, the big, the big project coming up, which I'm sure Julie can talk about, and if Ralph has, is the service line inventory that's DEP mandated, I'm sure Ralph's probably brought it up before, but that's the big, the big thing we gotta focus on here in the next few months. So, that'll keep us pretty busy. Then, I guess, on the sewer side of things, I'm also working with a contractor to line up a week's worth of cleaning and TV work. Basically, we try to, try to have someone come in, a third party to come in and clean and camera, and document any areas that we know that we have, usually have problems with, we, we try to go back to those and see if we can figure out what's going on and try to get them remedied. And along those lines, last year, we, we cambered a large section of sewer main on East Beaver Street, stemming from Wilson Street down to Allegheny, identified a lot of problems, and working with the contractor, trying to get that set up, to get that rehabbed. We're gonna try to do it where they're not, we're not open, cutting the road and digging everything up, because the sewer's very deep through there. It's about 10, 11 feet deep, so we're looking to do a rehab project where they, they line it with a PVC liner, so that's in the works. We're hoping to get that done this year. When I spoke with the contractor last week, he seemed to think he could fit it in towards the fall, but once we have a better understanding of if and when that'll happen, we'll keep everybody posted. Trying to think if there's anything else that was on my list. I guess the real, other thing that's really coming up is Governor Park Restrooms. We will be opening them this week, so we should have them open by the end of the week for people to use. That's really all the updates I got. You have any questions?
Go ahead.
Yes, Barb?
I do. With the paving schedule, how is that? Because I look back and we had, I think we had our bids, actually, it was May 15th of last year, I was just wondering how that was coming along.
Julie's worked on that, so here, I'll let her speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we had, the bids will be open on May 20th this year, and we don't have a specific timeframe. We've had them opened in April, sometimes May, we even had one in June, as we look back over the years. There's not really a set timeframe for it. After the bids are received, council can decide, or staff can administratively decide what streets from the list fit into the budget. Any streets not paved from the list go to the top of the list for next, for next year. And that's pretty much what, how that goes. I would suggest that we could do the paving list, approve it through council earlier, like, right after we do these bids, we could set up the list for next year and do measurements. Usually, after council approves, then we will go out and do the street measurements, so we could have all of that information together and look at that during budget season, and then have that ready to go, and then we would be putting out the paving bids in January or February, which, much earlier in the year.
For next year, but this year, it'll be, it won't be done till later than usual.
It will be May 20th that will open the bids, and then the paving project will move forward after those are received.
How long does that usually take, Julie, once we get the, how long do we allow for bids to come in?
We say that, we set a deadline for, like, August on that, you know, the end of the paving season, but it's really Matt works with them and schedules it.
Yeah, really, it's, it's depend, sorry. It's, it's really just dependent on how their schedule goes with weather. I mean, sometimes, you know, it gets into September, you know, October at the latest, just really, I think she puts in the contract when there's a deadline, but sometimes, obviously, it has to be bumped with, depending on the weather.
Okay, so paving won't start anytime soon, soon then?
Correct, not anytime soon, yes.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. I had one other thing, Matt, and maybe this is further down, too. I did look up this service line inventory, and I don't pretend to understand much of the 45 pages here, but it seems like it's really an involved process.
It is very involved, and, yeah, it's gonna be pretty cumbersome and time-consuming, yes, you are right. We definitely, we gotta work ahead of us.
Okay, because it looked like we had found out about this last October? Was that right? Maybe?
I don't remember the exact date we were notified of, of this. I mean, I know we did some training last year on it, it was probably in the spring sometime Julie and I attended.
Okay, so we have a lot to do. So who will be taking care of this, then?
I will.
Initially, I say, initially, Julie, it was, it was given to Julie as her project to work towards, but yeah, she can speak on her behalf of where she's at with the process.
Sure, sure. So Julie, could you, for the public's edification, tell them what the service line inventory project is?
Yes, we had that, if you, I wanted to do an update on the bees, if I could, on the bee ordinance. If you'd rather I spoke to that, that's fine. So, with the service line inventory, I don't know, do you wanna put up that slide? We had one slide to help everybody a little bit.
I will add, just for a moment, the office of the authority is overseeing the.
The Belfont Authority has been in touch with Matt and Julie through this whole process of checking out the lines that are going into the house. It's not that it hasn't been on the radar. It's, it's a long and tedious process, and we're to the point now where we're gonna, I think, reach out to the citizens and ask for all sorts of help, any help we can get. This is mandated, get this done. Ralph may have something else. I just wanted to throw that in there. It's not that they have not been working on it, we're very well aware of what's going on.
I just wanna add, you know, we are not ignoring anything. The rulemaking folks at the federal level have not even finished the rules yet. This came into play during the Trump administration, and then during the Biden administration, they wanted to revise these rules. So we're still waiting on the revised rules for the service line inventory. However, they're telling us the date that the first inventory is due is not changing, and that is October 16th of this year. So, we're, we're gonna submit everything we have, knowing that there will be unknowns, and every system will have the same, they'll have a number of unknowns, but we want to, we want the public to know what we're working on, and that it is a federal mandate, and we'll try to do the best we can with it.
Okay, so I just wanted to say, we did receive some training in 2023, this is the start of our training for data entry into the required sheets for reporting, and then that sheet was revised in April of 2023, and in September, there was an update on some of, some of the identification requirements. So all of these, this is just the initial inventory, so of, it's going to be an ongoing process, and the object of the whole process is to get the material of all the customer service lines from the main to the meter identified, wherever the, inside the customer's house, wherever the service line enters a building. So we have 3,490 customers as of April, so, and that increases as we add some new houses and in, in the developments. So we'll just continue to add that information, and the line material must be identified at multiple locations. And on the customer side of the line, depending on what information we have, we need to get a picture of the line coming into the home and leaving the meter, and we may need to expose the water line on both the customer side and the borough side to verify the material. So last year, we updated our meter installation sheet, so that when they go in to look at the, to install new meters with our meter replacement program, we get enough information for the service line inventory. And this year, we're working on entering historical data into the system and upgrading our service orders in our system, so that we can capture all the data in the field, so that this ongoing process will be able to then generate from our, our billing system the updated service line inventory every year. So this won't be something that we have to enter every single year, it'll be generated for us as the guys are out in the field replacing meters or getting that information. So then, we'll be contacting residents for appointments to inspect the line materials inside the houses, we'll be posting information on the website, and asking for pictures of the customer side of the connection, and the project is ongoing until all the lines are identified. So when we have unknowns, it's, you know, we will have some unknowns, probably quite a few to begin with, and the deadline in October is to have all of our initial customers, you know, listed, and then we'll continue to update the customer list. It'll just be an ongoing process, and it, until everything's identified, and I think that was pretty much all I have. Well, this picture up here is, kinda gives you an idea that where our responsibility is, but, like I said, at the curb stop, we need to identify two places from the customer side, and then we have to identify on our side as well. And we do have records there with our, with our main and on some of those curb stops, but we'll, we will just be entering whatever it is we have at this point, and then we'll be moving on to do, get some other information.
Okay. Julie, will we be, will there be any fees to our residents for any of this?
As?
Right now, we, the Borough Authority has never owned the, the customer side of the service line, although we're being mandated to address it. At some point, which we know will happen someday, there'll be a list of service lines on the customer side that need to be replaced, and the federal government doesn't care who pays for them, but they want them replaced. We will have to work something out, finance something, do something for every customer that cannot afford to replace the service line, but there will be a cost eventually for the customer side of the service line to be replaced if they end up on this list. But those have not yet, nobody's been identified yet.
So this is an unfunded mandate?
Yes, it's a classic example of an unfunded mandate.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Julie, you have anything else to share?
Uh, I can update on the bees, if any bee ordinance.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, one other item I had was the compost demonstration. I believe Dawn touched on that in his report, covered it pretty well. I just wanted to say that it was great to get out and talk to the residents about the compost and the bagging, and to thank Steve Caldana and Scott Whitehill, and the whole crew that was working out there to get more than 100 bags filled, even with wet weather, and we have 55 bags left. We sold 10 last week. We gave away about 50, and the compost can be purchased at the Borough Building during the week, picked up on Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00 with a receipt at the Mussler Lane facility. So, the other item that we were gonna look at was the beekeeping ordinance. So the ordinance was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting in November 11th, 2023, and at the request of the commission, there was feedback from the local beekeepers, and that was returned on December. Further consideration on that by the Planning Commission was on hold, as we worked on the nuisance bee issue for the neighbors on Bishop Street. On October 2nd, the council declared the stinging bees, aggressive bees, a nuisance, and the matter was given to the code enforcement officer. Shortly after that, our code enforcement officer resigned, but we did get a letter out in October, it was October 26th, that those were to be removed from that, from that area by December 26th. So that, there was not a response to that, and then the resident began to communicate through a lawyer, and the borough began to use a lawyer to communicate as well. And in the discussions, the drafted bee ordinance was discussed, and so, we had thought to leave that under the nuisance declaration and, and address that at some point when that was resolved, although council can decide to move that forward, it's, you know, it's in the Planning Commission, and we, they can review that further and offer a recommended ordinance, or, and the next meeting for that would be May 13th, or it can just wait until that nuisance issue is resolved.
Thank you, Julie. Any other questions from Matt or Julie?
I have one real quick. Is, are everybody's meters going to be replaced, going back to the water meters?
Yes, all the residential ones will be replaced. The authority will be taking care of that, right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So Matt, mine was replaced, like, 15 years ago, I think. Is that, was that the beginning of it? Or are they gonna be replaced again?
The beginning was 2020 when we started to, that's when we started this process, yeah, so.
I think Kent's referring to the first installation.
Oh, the first installation.
Oh, that's what I'm referring to.
The first installation was almost 20 years ago. But, yeah, this is, this is the update that we're doing.
So mine needs to be replaced?
Yes, unfortunately, all the ones that were initially installed 20-plus years ago are, they're at the end of their life.
All right. Because back where I live, that's probably the case. I mean, all of those residents where I live, they'll all be like, wait a minute, mine was replaced, but you're saying replaced from when we had it installed?
Yeah, they have a 20-year, 20-year battery life, and then, obviously, their, their accuracy diminishes, and, but yes.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Anything else? Mayor?
Matt, Julie, and Public Works, I just wanted to publicly thank you for all that you do. You're, you're a huge asset to our community. I know I somewhat frequently call Matt with a tree down, or a pothole, or a garbage can needed, and you always do it in a timely manner, and you're always very respectful, and it is greatly appreciated, so thank you.
Anything else for these? I'm sure we all wanna echo those comments, Matt. I know that the residents that I am in touch with on a daily basis love our Public Works people, we appreciate everything that you do, so keep it up, you're greatly appreciated. Anybody else? So we move on to Governor's Park Baseball Field Use with Mr. Nate France.
I didn't expect them to go so soon.
Nate, Nate, on the speaker there, push the push button, it shouldn't be a green light, that will light up.
Figure that out. Okay, well, I appreciate you all having me tonight. Seems like you got some other pressing matters, so I don't wanna take up too much of your valuable time. I came in tonight after discussing the Governor's Park Field and the usage of it with Mayor Johnson and Mr. Holdeman. I run an organization that's in the area, it's called Baseball U, U being short for university. I'm just a smaller part of a bigger organization that is throughout Pennsylvania and in a couple of other states. We're going into our sixth year, and we're really starting to, I would say, get a lot more local people. We draw from most of the center county area and some outlying areas, but recently, since we've been established here now more than a couple of years, we've gotten a lot more kids from, you know, the immediate area, and especially Belfont, at our youth level, from like nine years to 13, 14, 15 years. And we've, we've practiced that several places throughout the years that I've been doing this in different areas of the county. But I, I work here in, in downtown Belfont with Mr. Bill Missulo, who runs a small facility here in downtown, and I kinda hooked up with Bill as a coach and started doing a lot of training at his place, and again, started to get, to know a lot of the community members and families and the players, so that may have something to do with us kinda getting some more people from Belfont as well. But discussing a new location for us to practice, that's more central to where some more of our people are coming from, rather than making them drive over the mountain to where we used to practice at the old Shaner complex that Potter Township owns now, or driving over to State College to the Teener Field or over to the Community Field. I have a group right now that started practicing, they're using the Milesburg Field behind Snappies right now, so sometimes it gets difficult to manage and schedule, so we're trying to consolidate our efforts with trying to get the guys to practice maybe in one area, and being that it, you know, you guys have a great new facility there, one that I admire and that I played at when I was coming up in the 90s. in the 90s, I've started to explore the opportunity maybe to use that for our summer, summer practices, maybe even our fall. So Mr. or Mayor Johnson and Mr. Holdman asked me just to come in and break down an email that I had sent to them, discussing some of the usage and the rates for using the park. So I'm just going to get to that and kind of run down the email that I sent to, to those gentlemen. We would be looking to use the, the field for probably about 11 dates in the summertime. Obviously, we know the high school has it until they're, they're finished with, with school ball. Dates starting around June 18th. I believe the state championship game is scheduled for June 17th this year. So if they were to make it all the way again like they did last year, then we would, you know, like to start maybe using the field after they're done. If we started on the 18th, we typically go about two days a week. I'm asking for maybe Tuesday, Thursday evenings for a couple hours. That would give us through June and July, which our season usually ends about the middle of, or beginning of August, end of July. We're looking at 11 dates, possibly 15 if the high school team were to, you know, unfortunately get knocked out early or something like that. And just looking at the cost for what we've, we've had for some of the other venues that we've used in the past, and then looking at the, the cost for Governors, I just wanted to kind of bring it to your attention that, you know, it's, it's a little bit lopsided. I know Governors is a great park right now. I love the setting. The new turf is fabulous. It definitely gives you a leg up with the weather. But, you know, for, for 11 days just to practice on it, maybe do a couple of county games, because my oldest team at 17U is playing in the county, county league this, this summer as well. We're looking at a, a cost of about $2,200 at, at the current rate that the Borough has. 2,200. Or if we were to start using it sooner, if high school were to, were to end abruptly, sooner than, than expected, we're looking upwards of about $3,000 just for the summer months, June and July. If we were to use it for the fall, that would add another couple of months, September into usually mid-October when we, when we go to with fall ball. That would, again, obviously increase the cost to about 24 to 3200 dollars total for the season. Just respectively, the other venues that we use, Potter Township, which is the old Shaner Fields out on 322 there, we do a monthly fee. They have on their website their fees listed, and if you're using it regularly because you're a returning customer, and they can kind of count on you for some regular revenue, they give you a monthly rate, which we have had the last couple of years, which is about 250 a month, 250 a month for, and we would use that, that's just, you know, for usage as long as it's available, sometimes three to four days a week at that rate, because it's just a regular usage rate. We don't really conflict with much. There's not a regular team that plays there. It's only a couple hours of practice in the evening. And it's still available for them to rent, which they do for weekend tournaments and stuff like that, when outside organizations come into the area and want to, want venues for, you know, for, to host tournaments. So we don't take up that much time at the facility. So we could have a decent rate. You know, so for the summer, we're looking at 500 bucks for two months, June and July, versus the 22 to 3,000 for the usage at Governors for the same amount of dates. And then also State High, I've been in touch, I, I work and do training with the Assistant A.D., Athletic Director over there, his son. And when, you know, getting in with him, it's, State, the State High kind of manages it, but it's a community field. They charge about 29 bucks an hour for the usage of their, their community field over there. So if we were to use that regularly, you know, with, and consolidate our practices there, we're looking at about $638 for the 11 dates that I mentioned in the beginning, if we were to use Governors after the state championship game, or about 870 dollars for extra dates, say 15 to 16, if we were to start in the beginning of June, if high school were to, were to end. And if we were to go into the fall with that, we're looking at about 1,300 to 1,700 hours total for four months, which that would be, that would be summer and for fall, which if you look at the monthly rates, that's probably 335 to 450 a month for just the same amount of dates that we would use Governors Park for. So all I'm just trying to point out is that, that there's, there's a big difference there. And I'm just trying to see if, if, if so, after I discuss this, if you guys want to discuss it and come up with maybe a, a cost that's a little bit more closer, not saying it has to be the exact, because I, I like the area, I like the field, but something closer to, to what we're dealing with, you know, as an alternative. That being said, as I mentioned in the beginning, we're, a lot of our youth teams now, the last few years recently, as we're growing, are becoming more and more from this immediate area. And out of the 90 players that we have in our organization currently from nine through 17U, about 40 to 45% of them now are from Belfont School District, and then about 30 to 35% of those 40 to 45 are Borough residents, you know, families and kids that are involved already in, you know, in, in activities and stuff that goes on in the Borough. And just as we go forward with that, additionally, like the 17U team this year is playing in the County Ball League, which will have some home games. I had mentioned in my email to Mayor Johnson and Mr. Holdman that I don't mind if the Booster Club wants to do some summer fundraising, and they want to set up a concession stand during the games. You know, we're going to have folks there, their team's going to have folks there. People are going to be hungry, going to want drinks, be a decent amount for maybe 50/50 raffle. They can earn some, you know, they can raise some money for the high school team during the summer. That's just what's going on right now. But going down the road, which I discussed with, you know, Mayor Johnson a little bit briefly, I'm looking at a potential for bringing in an older division for some of our graduating high school players that are going off to college, or current college players that are from the area. And I want them to, to maybe have like a better competitive summer baseball option, rather than going all over the place or all over the country, or to play in different leagues, or going and playing for crappy teams just to kind of get some reps and whatnot. I'd like to put together a team going into next year that I'm planning already and doing research for, that would be affiliated with the AAABA, which is a national organization. And if you guys have ever heard anything going on in the Johnstown, Pennsylvania area, they have a huge, huge tournament at the end of the year, where they have all the teams from all the organizations throughout the country that come to Johnstown, and they have their, basically their World Series. So we're looking at affiliation with that, being that we already have a franchise, being Baseball U. And then also the Federation League, that's out of the western part of PA, which is mostly Clearfield and Jefferson County teams, or from Clearfield to Jefferson County. Bringing something like that to this area, so now people will start coming over here, we'll start hosting more games, and I'll bring in more people to the park, and possibly make it into something different. Plus, as much as we travel for tournaments, there's always the option to, if the relationship can be solidified, that we can create our own tournaments for the area. Instead of having to travel every weekend that we go out and play, maybe have a couple of home tournaments, where we can bring some teams from outside the area into the community here, you know, and play here. I mean, it's a great location, just with the one park at Governors, but you also have the Teener Field that's, you know, less than a mile away, and then the field at the Middle School. So it'll be very easy to run a eight, 10, 12-team tournament that is all being played at the same time simultaneously at those three fields, and then, you know, over a weekend or a couple days, and it generates some, some traffic in town as well. So there's a lot of things that could benefit, I think, on both ends if we're able to, you know, work something out possibly and go forward with, with those ideas and those, those plans. So that's all I had. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. France?
Yes, sir.
From my baseball background and knowledge, Baseball U is a very respectful organization.
Thank you.
And this field was built to benefit the Belfont community. A lot of the kids that are in your program, if I understand that correctly, are from right here in our community. And a couple times a week, right now, they're driving to Shaner Field because it's a little more affordable. And there's probably a high percentage of those families who probably stop and get something to eat in, in State College or the surrounding areas. I think it would be great if, if we could do something to bring, to keep the, the, the kids who are here on the, the community field, and to bring others in. And Nate has a great love for baseball. The field will be extremely well taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Because I know Nate and Mr. Missulo, and that's, that's what they do. The, the field will be well maintained and taken care of. The, the program has a basis of respect with, with the players. And if, I would love to see us be able to do something to, to help this organization out to stay home and make use of the community field, which was built for our community. So that, that's my wish, that, that we can work with Nate and, and do something to, to keep this program here in our backyard and make use of the field. So thank you, Nate.
No, yes, sir. Thank you. I didn't want to take up too much time. So the background that I have is almost 20 years in coaching college baseball. So I've been around, I know how to take care of things, I know how to help guys develop. So what we do as an organization is not just baseball, we're trying to help these guys, you know, kind of find their way through things in general. Just using baseball as kind of an avenue to help us springboard that. It is a holistic approach, and yes, there is a lot of life lessons and a lot of other stuff that goes into what we do and what we teach our players, which again, would in turn benefit the community, you know, maybe down, down the road. And yeah, there's a lot of people that, you know, we come into the training facility every weekend. I know Coach Bill and I are at it all day long, Saturday, Sunday. They come in from the immediate area, and they come in from the surrounding area, and they drop kids off for an hour, a couple hours, and yeah, they go get something to eat, they go shopping downtown, and that's a regular occurrence every weekend. I, I know a lot of them are up to date on some of the, the Victorian Christmas stuff that you guys do too, because I know a lot of them come in talking about it, and that's what the moms want to do when they drop the kids off, and they go shopping and go hang out. Some of the people that are coming from out of the area that don't have a lot of time, and they want to stop and get something to eat, yeah, I recommend places all the time in the area and in town that they can go and they can, you know, enjoy themselves at. So, yeah, thank you for mentioning that, because, you know, in my nervousness and the time I didn't want to take up, I kind of left that.
Thank you, Nate.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have to move on here to, the next is the Teener League Field Agreement Amendment. Mr. Holdman?
I think, I put a memo in your packet that's somewhat self-explanatory. I think everyone knows, a couple years ago, Jeremy Lucas took over the Teener League field, and ever since he's done that, he's really been doing an excellent job in keeping that looking nice and utilizing it for the youth. So what Jeremy is proposing, it's a change to the agreement that we signed back a little over a year ago with, with the, now the Belfont Teener League Board of Directors. Jeremy wants to, based on a discussion with the Belfont Athletic Director, start, you know, using the field for junior high baseball. And a couple of things he wants to do is that they wanted to change or modify the agreement that we currently have. So I put a draft in your packet with the only change to Section 2, the term of the lease. Initially, our lease just went on a year-to-year, it automatically renewed year-to-years, the way it was initially drafted. And what I did was just took the current Belfont High School agreement and, and tried to come to the same end date, which would be, you know, December 31st, 2034, which is what the, he, he was looking for. So later in the meeting, if there's an agreement, any agreement to making that change, we can go ahead and do that amendment and sign that. Second thing that he's requesting, and because this is in a more residential area, I wanted to run it by Borough Council. He also want, wants to paint the concession stand, the dugouts, and the press box the same color red that's, that we painted the, out at U, out at Governors Park. So they obviously would do that. That wouldn't be done by the Borough, it'd be, they would pay for the supplies, materials, and do the work. In fact, we might even have another volunteer outfit do the painting for them if it's agreeable. But one way or another, we were going, he was going to paint everything this year, so it's a matter of if going with the red is okay. That's essentially it.
Joanne?
So I, I looked at, first of all, the field agreement amendment. I have no problem with that. That looks good to me. It just, it seems reasonable. Regarding the change of paint colors, if we're going to change the color to a red color, it should, in my opinion, be one of the colors of the Belfont Borough's branding, not the Belfont Area School District red, which is what we currently have in Governors Park. Colors are a form of branding. Belfont Borough has their logo colors, and the Belfont Area School District has their red and white colors. Since the Teener League belongs to the Borough, I believe we should be using our colors, not some other entity's branded color. So I think we could either keep it what it is currently, or use one of our colors, which I think because of they're more muted, would be more amenable to the neighbors. In addition, the darker colors would show less dirt than that bright red, and thus result in less maintenance over time. Our logo colors, as you can see on the wall, are cream, gold, burgundy, purple, and forest green. I think any of these colors, other than the cream, would have the advantage of less maintenance over time.
This isn't, this isn't on the agenda tonight, his request to paint it up, paint it, is it?
I think it is. I think it's at the very end, Ken, but you can always hold off on it. I mean, I don't know.
I, I think respectfully stating, the junior high baseball team is going to be using it. When they do their league play, it's all Belfont kids who are in our school district. If you've been out to see the press box at Governors Park, it is absolutely beautiful, and it would be my vote to, to go with the, the red that he requested. It's a very nice red, and it, and it fits very well.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Why do we need to change the lease?
We really, we wouldn't have to, Doug, but he requested it because I think working with the athletic, Athletic Director, according to Jeremy anyway, she wanted to see the lease before she was going to go ahead and sign for him to be able to use that field for the junior high. So it was as simple as that.
Doesn't change the use. First of all, history is, I wasn't in favor of the 15-year lease to begin with for the Governors Park field. Now I don't understand why we're signing a lease for 11 years without any clause to renew. So for me, I don't like to see any 15-year or 11-year lease without a clause to revisit it if something changes. So that's, I'm not sure that, I'm not in disagreement with this, but I don't understand why we even need it.
As opposed to just having a shorter lease, you mean?
Yeah, you could use that, or, or, I mean, what, what are we changing by creating a lease for 11 years to, for the use of the field? What's the difference without it?
I would agree with what Don said as far as the gentleman that takes care of that field. I live there, drive by there twice a day. It's beautiful. I've noticed that it's been majorly overhauled over the last couple of years. Excuse me for not knowing exactly, but it looks really good. I'm not familiar with the leases and all that, but whoever's taking care of it has been doing a good job. I would agree that the dugout color should be what they feel, those that use it and the teams that play on it. I don't think any of the people that live back there are necessarily going to worry about it, what shade of red they are. But it looks great. I can't even tell you what color the dugouts are right now. I think they're green. Mayor, green?
Hunter Green.
Hunter Green. So I think I can trust that the people that are taking care of that field will continue to make it look good. Again, I don't, I don't comment, I have no comment on the, on the lease length, because I didn't know anything about that. But I trust certainly that the gentleman that is requesting it will make it look good. And I'm in favor of the, the painting for sure. But again, I don't really know about the lease.
Well, my question is, why do we need to have an 11-year lease agreement? I, I agree with you. The field's great. Let them paint it whatever color they choose. But I, I don't understand handing this.
What's the alternative?
To leave it as it is.
Doug, let me, I, I want to try to explain again what he said to me, and I'm, I asked him to show up here tonight. But, okay, so he's starting, he's going to start with working with the Belfont Athletic Department. The Athletic Department already has a lease with the Borough for 15 years for Governors Park. So that was why the- So that was why the Athletic Director asked him for a similar timeframe for the lease, to be consistent, I'm assuming. So that's where, that's where it's coming from, nothing, I don't think there's anything nefarious about it. Personally, I, I'm like you, I mean, I, once we usually sign a lease, they're typically forgotten. I mean, it's going to renew year after year after year after year.
I have a problem signing a year for, a lease for 11 years, even the 15-year, without a review of it say every three years or five years. That doesn't mean it's going to change. It gives us an outlet, or them an outlet, I know it says in here if both parties agree to the terms, but we got into trouble with our water authorities signing a 50-year lease with no clause to reopen it. I'm just not comfortable signing a lease for 15 years.
Well, I, listen, I, there would be nothing wrong with approving the 11-year lease, and the reason it's 11 is to get all in the same timeline. But just say, you know, it has to be looked at every three years during the 11 years. I, I'll tell you what, I can only just tell you from my experience working at the Borough on any of the leases that I've seen like that, is that usually you go back and it's seven years after the fact and you're thinking, oh, we were supposed to look at that four years ago. That's just unfortunately the way it works.
That's fine, but still there's an opening there if needed.
Yes, and if you wanted to make the recommendation, we can just add a little clause saying it should be evaluated after the, whatever number of years you prefer. We can write it up any way you want.
It's not up to me, I'm just making the comment that I, I wouldn't, I don't agree with signing a lease for that long of a term without a clause in it for adjustments, that's...
Could...
It's understood.
Could we, I, I'm, after listening to Doug, I, I think I'm going to backtrack a little bit in what I said, and it would be nice to have a three-year review. Could we table this on, at the meeting this evening so we can get a decent addition to that and then bring it back at the next meeting?
It's on the agenda, you could easily make an amendment to the motion that's listed on the agenda. You know, if you say three years, what I'm hearing, or whatever, that passes as an amendment, we'll put that language in the draft, in the agreement.
Yeah, that sounds good. To review it after three years, that takes care of that worry. Okay. All right, next is the, anything else on that topic? We're running out of time guys, I got to keep it moving. Teenage League Press Box, Dugout, Concession Stand, if we're good there, we're going to move on to the Armory Building, second floor plans. Do you have something on that, Ralph?
We just, I think we were requested to put in a floor plan of the second floor office space that the Borough is intending to move its offices over to. So it's there for your review, it's not etched in stone, it's just the staff looking at where people would go and how the workflow would take place once we get over there, so happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a timeline yet?
Uh, no, there's no, there's no formal deadline or any serious deadline to work against. You know, the elevator, we're still waiting for the final inspection, so that'll take place. And you heard Mr. Allman talk about his schedule. So we, we always, when we do things in-house, it's between jobs and rainy days and what have you. So, and that's what it would be, and we're going to talk about a related topic here in the regular meeting, the move exactly, but you know, we don't have an exact timeline at this point.
It's close though.
It's close, yes, I think.
I think that's what we're getting at. It's close. It's coming, yeah. That's good news, that's really good news.
I have another question about the second floor. I noticed that there's a conference room up there. Is that solely for the staff or is it, or will we be able to have meetings there, kind of like what we're doing right now over at the other building when we have smaller meetings?
It's meant for the staff, like we have our own conference room. Sometimes there's a phone call or what have you and, you know, a citizen comes in, they need to meet, they'd like to meet with, you know, without everybody listening. So we, we've always had a conference room in our office space, that's what it's meant for. Just since we're talking about offices and whatnots or, or conference rooms, there is a, as you know, everybody knows here, that there's a small conference room here in the building. We would like to have that available for council members and the mayor to schedule meetings with, for citizens. We just have to work out a schedule system, but that was, we think that would be the best room. It's here in the first floor, it's easy to get to and it's generally available. So we'll, we'll get word out on that once we get everything finalized.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody have anything else? Go ahead Barbara.
Questions, thank you. So I was looking over the design, I do question putting the copier in an enclosed room, they do get very hot and it's also, it seems like it could be in a better place.
There's a couple, where we originally placed it, there's no outlets in the wall, so it was near the elevator. You know, we're not there every day of the week and we're not there in the evenings. We just thought it'd be better to have it with a posties machine in a locked space. That way we don't have to worry about anybody tampering with the posties machine or anything. So that was some of our thinking on that.
Okay, I also had a question. Why does the Assistant Superintendent of Public Works have an office in there?
That person now currently has an office in the, in our main offices and helps with some of the responsibilities of the main office. So we just thought we'd transition that office over to the new space.
Oh, okay. Um, let's see. And the mayor is going to have his office over in the other building, is that correct? Or do you need an office over here too?
He will have an office over in the other space. I know you work with Alyssa quite a bit as your administrative assistant. Alyssa's perfectly willing to work with you over here. We don't have a formal office set up. Again, what we envisioned because of public access and all of that, you know, anybody can use the, the conference room that's here in the first floor, if you want to meet with a citizen, you want a conference room or whatever, we think that would be the best case scenario. But the mayor will have an office over with the police department.
Great, thank you.
You're good? Anybody else?
I'm good with whatever.
He looks good, he looks good.
I'm good with whatever.
Okay, that concludes Bellefontaine Borough Council Work Session. Call to order, the Bellefontaine Borough Council Business Meeting please for Monday, April 15th. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on my nation under God, in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution of Justice, and of all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Benier?
Here.
Mr. Brackbill?
Here.
Ms. Clayton?
Here.
Ms. Dan?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. McKean?
Here.
Ms. Purnell?
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick is excused. Ms. Tosti Vacy?
I'm here.
Mr. Larson?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Before we start, I'd like to remind all council members, while voting or commenting, do so professionally and respectfully towards your fellow council members. Thank you. Next item is the additions to the council meeting agenda. We can act on any council member agenda item that would like to be added. Do we have any items that we'd like to add?
I'd like to add an executive session for the ceiling for personnel.
Council must state why the action item is being added to the agenda. You have anything further, Mr. Brackbill?
No, just for personnel.
You have to vote on that? Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
You made a motion to have an executive committee after the meeting for, for personnel reasons?
Any discussion? Roll call, vote for that please. Mr. Benier?
No.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Okay, next item is public comment. Anybody who has a comment on any item on the agenda or anything in general that would like to step up and speak? Any public comment from anybody in the audience? No? Anybody on council? Yes, Joanne?
I have two items. On January 2nd, I asked the administrative staff and the new council leadership to invite Brandy Robinson, the Penn State University Associate, Associate Teaching Professor and Co-Director of the Local Climate Action Plan Training Program, to a future work session to discuss the new program that's being run by the PSU Sustainability Institute. Since then, I haven't heard of when this is likely to occur, so to be more transparent and collaborative, I would like for all of us to know when will Ms. Robinson be invited and when will this item be placed on our work session agenda so that we can hear what she has to say. My second item is that Tuesday, April 23rd is Election Day. Everyone, please remember to either turn in your mail-in ballot into the voter boxes by 9:00 AM on Monday, April 22nd, or vote on Tuesday between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, and you can also deliver your mail-in ballots up until 8:00 PM at the Elections Office at the Willough Bank Building. Also, I'm requesting that the Borough please put up the parking barriers in front of the First Presbyterian Church for voter parking so that we can make sure that the voters have access to their facilities. Usually it's done, there have been a couple of times it's been forgotten and we have people scrambling trying to find places because it's basically residential parking right in front of the church. So thank you.
Yes. Any other comment from council? Okay, next is communication written. Campus and Community Sustainability Expo, April 25th, 2024. There's a handout in front of you there for each member.
Yes, I just want to add, it's 5:00 to 7:00 PM as the council president just mentioned. It's at the State College Borough Building. Again, that was April 25th.
Thank you Ralph.
Sure. The next item is, there's a flyer at the table, it's regarding a CADA public hearing and, and involving the new changes to the Bellefontaine service called the B Line. That public hearing with CADA will be held in this room between 5:30 and 7:30 PM on Wednesday, April 24th. So again, we, we posted that to our website, it's on the CADA website as well, and we have flyers here, we hand it out to everyone. I believe that's all we have under written communications.
Any questions regarding that? Mr. Johnson?
Ralph, could we put the B Line, could we put the B Line service summary on the Borough website before that, or is that?
Sure, if it's available, I think there's a link to it, is that right?
I beg your pardon?
Is there a link to it?
The survey?
I don't know, this is from the meeting we had with David Rishell.
As long as there's a link and all that, or I'll, I'll get the link and we'll add it, see if we can add it to our website or, or direct people to, to their website.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, next is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be acted upon by one single motion. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'd actually like to pull the meeting minutes again, please.
Thank you Rita. Anything else?
I'd like to pull the budget versus actual summary. Well, well, it's the one that's the detail, whatever it is called. Think I made that mistake the last time.
Okay, so the budget versus actual?
Yes.
Is that right, Joanne?
Mm-hmm.
And then the council meeting minutes from April 1st, 2024. Is that correct Rita?
Correct.
So with those two polled, a motion and a second for the rest of it.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Those minutes, thank you.
I'll second, Brackbill.
Thank you. Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, he asked for a motion for the approval of the minutes, and then we'll see what questions come up. Okay.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Discussion.
Okay, a couple of things. I just wanted to say that I really appreciated having the editing comments in there, that made it much easier to see what was being suggested as far as changes go. With that being said, I do have a slight issue with the one sentence that was added in under the consent agenda for the meeting minutes the last time. I think we need to be very careful when we're adding things that we're not modifying it to maybe what we meant to say, as opposed to what was really said. And specifically, it's stated in there that there was a violation of Borough Code of Conduct, and I listened to the meeting, and I listened to it, and I listened to it, and I actually wrote down word for word what was said, and there was never any mention of a violation of Borough Code of Conduct. There was mention of personal attacks, and there was mention of policy, but specifically that was not in there. And I feel as though if there's clarifications to be made to something that's in the meeting minutes, that that should be done in like a public comment section at the next meeting saying, "What I meant to say was," or "To clarify what my comment was last time, this is what I meant," rather than adding things to the minutes that weren't actually said.
And I...
And allowing them to come on our force, so they can experience Bellefonte Borough. This is a great community-oriented town. I personally am from here, I enjoy working here, and I'm just excited, and again, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to lead this department in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have two proclamations this evening. The first one is the National Small Business Week proclamation. Whereas the Borough of Bellefonte recognizes and values the dedication and entrepreneurial spirit within the community, and whereas small businesses are the backbone of Pennsylvania's economy, and whereas small business keep our community, the state, and America's economies growing strong, and whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs throughout the United States Small Business Administration and other government agencies, and whereas the Borough of Bellefonte supports and joins this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain a vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now, therefore, the Mayor of Borough of Bellefonte, Center County hereby recognizes April 28th through May 4th, 2024, as Small Business Week in the Borough of Bellefonte, and reminds individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which acknowledges and celebrates the achievements made by small businesses both locally and nationally. Next, Watershed Cleanup Proclamation. Whereas Bellefonte Borough has participated in clear water conservancies, Watershed Cleanup Day for the last 28 years, and whereas during the last year's event, 500 volunteers helped remove and properly dispose of 8,246 pounds of trash collected from road sides, parks, streams, and forests throughout Center County, and whereas Bellefonte Borough is committed to improving our environment for the benefit of our citizens and visitors, now therefore, I, Mayor Buddy Johnson, do hereby proclaim April 20th, 2024, to be Watershed Cleanup Day in the Borough of Bellefonte, and encourage all staff and citizens to participate in the event. Thank you.
Chief Whitmer, do you have a report?
I did.
Okay. Stay there, that's fine. Or go up there, that's fine, too.
He has a mic.
He has a mic, so you should be good, okay.
Does everyone have a copy of my report?
We got it, yes.
Okay. I'd just point out that during March, the Bellefonte Community Easter Egg Hunt, Talleyrand, concluded. I'd like to thank the local fire companies and EMS. They provide a great service down there on their own time, and we really appreciate that. I'd also like to note that we added a new police vehicle to our fleet. We were able to get a new one in, get some of our older equipment exchanged out. Also, in March, we have concluded the civil service process with an eligibility list, and we're excited about the possibility of adding new personnel to our team. Also, all officers right now are finishing up on the mandated continuing education required by our certification. They're working on that, we have to get 16 hours done each year. They're going to be concluding that by the end of this month. And then, the second page is my report for the activity that our department has done with hours and incidents.
Anybody have any questions for Officer Whitmer? All right. Chief, thank you very much for the report. Next is, there's some HARB information here on our agenda, I don't see Gina. The next HARB meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 23rd, at 8:30 a.m. Planning Commission meeting is Monday, May 13th, at 5:00 p.m., and the Nittany Valley Joint Planning Commission is Thursday, May 16th, at 6:00 p.m. at Marion Township. Borough managers' report was submitted. Questions?
I want to go back to the OCA question. Gina's report contains a link to the county's Active Transportation Plan Survey for Public Engagement. Could we place that information on the website to help the public respond to these types of issues? For those who don't know what that means, active transportation includes walking, biking, public transport, read CADA, strollers, wheelchair scooters, ATVs, et cetera, and ways to help people find their way and get around in the community. So, if that is, we can do that, I think that will help the public.
We can do that, thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Stewart and his report that he submitted? Mr. Barr? He didn't submit it, though. Any questions for Mr. Barr with the nuisance codes? He's here in the meeting.
Is that him?
Liaison reports, they've all been submitted. Do I have any questions relative to those?
Keep going, keep going.
Authorities and council-appointed, it was also submitted, it's all in your packet, commissions and councils-appointed. Mr. Brackbill, you have anything from the Bellefonte Fire Department Executive Committee? Anything new?
Nothing new at this point.
Okay.
Nothing new at this point.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on any of those submitted reports that were in your packet?
I have one.
Yep.
Are the signs up for the EV charging vehicles to, for the fees, the new fees? Are they in place?
The signs are up, everything's installed.
Okay, and our parking enforcement has been...
Enforcing.
Yeah, and nothing new, but that's 24/7, so our officers are aware that... Thank you, Chief. I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments on those submitted reports? Next is current and old business. We had an executive session on personnel matters on April 10th. Next is council's formal acceptance of the resignations of Officer Matthew Pollock, Officer Jason Brower, and Chief Sean Weaver, in a motion and a second to accept these resignations.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or comments? Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the council's formal designation of Detective William Whitmer as acting Bellefonte Borough Police Chief. I need a motion and a second to approve Detective William Whitmer as our acting police chief.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Discussion? Sorry. Questions? Okay. Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the council action to select police officer candidates from the Bellefonte eligibility list. Acting Chief Whitmer is recommending the selection of Andrew Hurd and Lisa Larkin. Need a motion and a second to select these individuals as officers from our eligibility list.
So moved, Brackbill.
Second. Tosti Vacy?
Thank you. Discussion or questions? Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the council approval of the borough manager to begin the hiring process for a permanent chief of police. A motion and a second to have borough manager start the hiring process for a permanent chief of police.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, Brackbill.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a topic here, borough offices to be moved to the Armory Building. Consider hiring movers to move the borough offices contents to the Armory Building. This would be in place of using our in-house borough labor forces as time allows. I would need a motion and a second to approve hiring movers to do the work as described.
I'll make that motion.
Second, McKean.
Thank you. Discussion?
Is this something that would need to be bid?
I don't think it's going to be that expensive. There are bidding limits we have to abide by, but I don't, my best guess is we're under the bidding limits. But we typically would get estimates.
Okay, so you would get estimates from different moving companies?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Give a guess of what it may be?
I don't, I have not started seeking estimates, so I don't have an idea. You know, again, I don't think it's, you know, thousands and thousands, but it's going to be fairly expensive.
I guess, my only comment, my only fear is, the grant was to upgrade the police department, and we've made a lot of concessions, and, you know, I would really like to see that move forward, and it just seems like there continues to be expense after expense, and I just wanted to be noted that I hope that that is not taking away in any shape or form what the grant's intended purpose was to be, and that's to upgrade the current police department.
And I have a second comment. This was not pre-planned in our budget, and I'm not sure we have the space available in our budget to do this.
There's a couple of things, you know, we'll have an expense, I mean, there'll be some expenses, and, you know, the committee's aware where we're at financially. When it's all said and done, we're going to be in the red on this project for a while, so we are looking at having a debt. If we were to go through the bidding, or go through the getting estimates and have a cost, this would be added into that cost. It would not come out of the grant, the grant's pretty much exhausted, so this would be just added on to the expenses that we have incurred. You know, we're a public agency, we have to bid certain projects, certain ways, it's expensive, so we have some overruns, but there's really no way around it. The building, in order to use it, had to be ADA compliant, so, and really, that's really where the bulk of the funds went. But we, you know, I can, we can do it a couple of ways, I can bring back some estimates, and if you're interested in doing it that way, it's going to delay things a couple of weeks, but I can bring back estimates without knowing, you know, how much we're talking about. You know, I can't even guess, but I don't, I don't think it's more than 10,000, but that's simply a guess, I don't know.
I think we need to go back and remember what we wrote, I think, at the last meeting, it was in the minutes, that no new monies, no monies would be approved, or would need, any new money's going to have to be approved, and just like we, I think that's what it was stated in the agenda at that point. It wasn't any minimum or maximum, it was just, we needed to know how much, and where it's going to go and approve it.
So, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we get estimates, and once we have at least three estimates, then it can be considered before council.
We have a motion and a second on the table to hire movers.
So, I'm moving to table it until we have that information.
Does anybody want a second tabling it? Can we just vote on the motion that's in front of us already? Any other discussion?
Comment?
Yep, go ahead.
I think it's, I agree with the mayor about the funds. What is borough staff's opinion on this? What are our resources that may be available or not? And I highly respect your input on this.
There are some things we're going to have to rent, I mean, we have very heavy fireproof filing cabinets, we're going to have to rent equipment to move those cabinets. Now, whether a moving company has those in-house, I don't know, but there are things that are going to be heavy for us to move. But we typically do things like this table you're sitting at was moved by our staff. That's one example of things we do. If the weather's not conducive to work outside, you heard Matt say about, he works with the weather as well, we do the same thing, if there's downtime, we schedule the personnel to do things inside, and that's what we would do, that's what we've done, we painted the borough offices, you know, over the last winter, when people were inside, we've remodeled the first floor police department with our own staff, there's many, many projects. We built Governor's Park restrooms with our own staff, we're used to doing things that way. But if we want to change and get, have it done by somebody else, we can do it that way, too.
I think part of what we need to remember is, it still does cost to use our employees to do this. Since this is also not their area of expertise, maybe, is there a higher chance that someone could get hurt, be off work? I do have a lot of those concerns, but I do not know, like you, how much this would cost to do, so I think we do need to weigh this out.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with what everybody's saying, Barb's saying, and Joanne, that the initiative here was to put in front of us that no money would be approved until it was brought to council for approval. And I, you know, so, I'm going to vote, I don't want to, if we're going to go to this route.
But Randy, I think we're trying to clarify...
If there's any projects or any further construction work, I think if I remember correctly, had to come in front of us for approval, obviously.
Okay, let's clarify, we were going to do this in-house without any expense other than our labor. It's been suggested that we go out of house, and what I'm hearing is we're to get estimates. So, I don't know why you would vote no, but we're going to, it sounds like we're going to come back with estimates and maybe some options.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We've discussed it to death and back.
Parliamentary question. I made a motion to table it so we could get those estimates. Nobody seconded, so if we're voting on this now, I believe that means that we would be giving Ralph and the administration... Ralph and the administration, go ahead, to hire somebody without those estimates. So that was why I made the motion.
We can amend the motion to have three estimates, bring it back, and decide from there. So I am making a motion to amend the motion to add three estimates to the motion.
And come back next time for a final vote?
That's what I'm hearing.
I'll second the motion.
That's what I was trying to do.
So there you go. Any discussion on that amendment?
If I may, while we're on topic, and I respect, I agree with you, and I respectfully saying, I hope that in the near future, police station renovations can be put before this council. It's been long waiting and extremely needed, so hopefully that will come before us sooner rather than later.
Any other discussion? Vote on the motion.
Do you want to restate it, just so, we're voting on the amendment now?
We have a motion, and an amended motion to, for Ralph to come back to us with three estimates.
You're voting on the amendment first.
Right, and then the motion, yes.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Now we have to vote on the original motion, it's no longer there anymore?
Mr. Bernier.
No.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Okay. Done with current and old business. Moving on, we have new business. John Clark Escavating Certificate for payment number four in the amount of thirty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents to Parkview Heights Stormwater Management Project. A motion and a second, please, to pay him.
I'll make the motion, Johnson.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Glad to get that going.
Yeah. Next is the memo from the Assistant Borough Manager on various projects and updates within the borough.
I have one quick question on that. On number five, I don't understand what it means about being required to have stamped drawings, and because of that, we have to include accessibility. Could you explain that?
The price on the, you know, when the original price came back, and it came back way high for the batting cage.
Yes.
I ended up having to talk to our architect, and ended up having a one-on-one meeting with the building code official of Spring Township to see if there was any way under the revised, under a revised model maybe, when we were just talking about putting up a net, that we could just kind of do a replacement. And according to the building code official, he requires stamp drawings. And a stamp is an architect's stamp that is essentially stating that they meet all the design criteria and meet all the code and regulations.
Okay.
So because of that, Barb, part of, when I talked to John Nastis, the contractor, part of the problem is, is that to bring that up to accessibility standards, it's going to require a lot of fill to come in, and that's where the cost is. So right now, I'm kind of at a standstill until I get everybody together and talk to them, now that I have all the information.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
So, if I, let me make, see if I understand what you're saying. The stamping brings it up to a level where we have to do the ADA accessibility, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Next is a memo from the Finance Director inviting council to attend the real estate tax collectors meeting scheduled for April twenty-third at six p.m. April twenty-third at six p.m.
Comment? And this is for a whole bunch of things. I've seen a whole bunch of things coming through in the last couple of days, saying that there's going to be meetings on May twenty-third, May, I mean, April twenty-third. April twenty-third is primary election day. Several of the elected officials will be working at the poll that day, both here in this borough and throughout the county. Is there any way that this meeting could be taped for later viewing? Do you know?
I see Ms. Berger and our audience are real estate collector. Do you want to come up to the podium? Deb, thank you very much.
Okay, this meeting, I don't know how many of you are aware, back in January, all of the tax collectors, the school officials, the municipalities received notice that the county was switching their data processing from RBA, which is a local company, to GSS, which is a company out of Wayne County. We've had a meeting with the county asking questions about this. Subsequently, we also had another meeting with RBA about this. From what we understand, because things are still not clear as to how much it's going to cost, and what is required by us. As it is right now, the county is going to go GSS. The municipalities and the school districts can choose whoever they want to for their bills and their data processing. This meeting is with the Bellefonte School District, with the Bellefonte School District tax collectors, and any municipalities therein, Spring Township, Benner, Walker, Marion. We just invited them to come to try to help us understand and to hash out some of the questions we have, to then go back to the county again for clarification on things. So I don't know if that helps out or not. This is not like anything that would be on CNET or anything like that. We weren't having anybody there to tape it as such. Somebody can take notes and give to you, or if you have questions, that we can hash out. We don't know the answers. This is for us to kind of formulate questions to take to the county to try to get answers. So I don't know if that helps clarify things.
Yeah, partially. Let me ask you a related question, then. So if we can get several of the, would having council members, because you said this was a school district-related tax issue.
This is just Bellefonte School District wanted to get together to see how we felt about either staying with RBA, switching to GSS. Well, because each of the tax collectors in Bellefonte School District are then responsible to their municipality also, we invited all the municipalities to come also.
So our property tax, which is what you deal with?
Correct.
Ours is joined with the county. And maybe this is a question that needs to be going back. Whereas the school districts is a separate entity, because we're hooked in with the county's taxes, we would be basically forced into going to the GSS and not having that option. Is that correct?
Not technically, because there are municipalities within Center County that their bills are separate. Harris Township, College Township, those people pay the county bill at the county, they pay their municipality bill within their jurisdiction. So they actually are already separate.
Those are the types of things that you're going to work out at this meeting and discuss?
No, we're not going to work it out. We're going to try to figure out where people want to go with this, and what questions we have. As it stands right now, the GSS had come to us and told the tax collectors to go to our municipalities, ask for fifty dollars a month toward the GSS system. But when we had our meeting with the county and GSS representative was there, that did not sound like that's all the requirements as far as financial. They were to have another meeting between the county and a GSS official to get more answers to bring back to us to try to help us understand, when we come to you and say, this is how much it's going to cost you. I do know that RBA, for what they charge you right now for 2024, was about six hundred and twelve dollars or something like that. So fifty dollars from GSS for twelve months would be six hundred, but it didn't sound like at our meeting that was all the costs. We want to know what the hidden costs were, before I can come to explain it to you. But yes, we can separate. The county would go with GSS, and Bellefonte Borough could go with whoever.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next is the Spring Leaf Pickup. That'll be held Monday, April twenty-second through Friday, April twenty-sixth. I believe Matt mentioned that. That's the Spring Leaf Pickup. That'll be Monday, April twenty-second through Friday, April twenty-sixth. Next is the Teenage League Field Agreement Amendment. A motion and a second to approve the amended Teenage League Field Agreement from a year to, year to year to an eleven-year agreement, but, so, that's the motion that's in front of us. Think we're going to amend it?
I will make the motion to approve this for discussion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion?
My discussion is, I would like to see the agreement amended to be, for us to be able to review it every three years. That doesn't necessarily mean that there's changes, it just gives each of us an opportunity to make changes if we see the need for.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
Any other questions?
I need a second to that amendment.
Right.
I'll second it.
It's a second? Okay.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
And Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Do we have to vote on the original?
Yes.
Did we motion and a second for the original one, or?
No, you already had the first motion, now it's just going back and voting.
I will make the motion to approve it.
Thank you.
I'll second again.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. Final item is the Teenage League Field dugouts, press box, and concession stands, paint color changes. A motion and a second to approve the color change from a hunter green to a red that matches the Governor Park baseball fields.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Johnson.
Thank you. Discussion?
I feel, too, that the red is, yeah, that the red is too bright and garish. Other than that, it doesn't really matter. I would prefer the maroon that we have, though, actually. I think it would be a nicer offset to the green, you know, based on what we've seen in the photos. I like the red as proposed. It's part of the school, it's for the kids, and I think it looks very nice.
Hey, they're maintaining the field, they're doing a great job, giving them the chance to choose the color for what they've recommended.
Other comments? We'll move to vote.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
No.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
No.
That concludes the business meeting. I need a motion and a second to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we're going to go into an executive session. Business meeting's adjourned.[1786.21]